Very good.
It looks like Craig is here to accept information and technology, yes.
Yep. All right. Whereas Wednesday, September 14th, 2022, has been proclaimed as Information and Educational Technology Appreciation Day, and whereas the Newington Public School System is committed to honoring its information and education technology professionals and recognizing their contributions to the educational system, and whereas the informational and educational technology professionals are well-qualified and dedicated to their craft by refreshing their skills to keep pace with the rapid evolution of technology, and whereas the information and educational technology professionals help students to use technology safely and prepare them for the demands of the changing global society and workplaces, and whereas the information and educational technology professionals commitment to providing excellence in contemporary technology services and solutions that ensure and enhance the learning process is exemplary, and whereas it is the desire of the Board of Education that the information and educational technology professionals should be made aware of their appreciation, we do hereby proclaim Wednesday, September 14th, 2022 as Newington Informational and Educational Technology Appreciation Day. Therefore, be it resolved that we urge all of the citizens of our community to join with us in actively expressing gratitude to our information and educational technology professionals who represent an investment in excellence in our community. Be it further resolved that the Secretary of the Newington Board of Education is directed to spread this resolution upon the minutes of this meeting and to provide a suitable copy to the Directors of Information and Educational Technology, signed by the members of the Newington Board of Education. And our recipients are here.
Yes, Mr. Holland is here on behalf of his department.
Mr. Holland. I'll give that to you, and I'll give this to you as well, if you want to talk.
I appreciate it. As the lone wolf standing through the start of this meeting, I feel for the effort you put in for the former meeting. It's a great honor to appreciate, to accept this on behalf of my team, as well as Jay's team, the educational technology professionals. It's often kind of unthankless work sometimes, it feels like, so it's really a wonderful gesture, and we appreciate it with so much gratitude and sincerity. Thank you all very much.
I want you to know, we appreciate you. Every meeting, he's bailed us out, some way or another.
Technology.
We'll take a moment now, if anyone from the board wishes to make a comment. Go ahead. Ms. Parry?
I feel like it's been a while since we were able to be thankful. So...
In person.
In person. That's what I meant. So I have two kids in school, and they love their Chromebooks, and I just, you know, I think it's great that we have in Newington the opportunity to have every single student has a Chromebook for learning and everything that comes with it. I also love the new Parent Square app. I like having everything in one spot and getting all the notifications, and it comes through text and email and the app. It's fantastic. So thank you for that new addition to this year. I think it's wonderful that it's very all-contained and easily able, you're easily able to distribute notifications. I like that chat feature with the teachers or whoever, so it's just a fabulous app and really happy that we have it this year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Ms. Yow?
I just want to say thank you again. You bailed me out a few times, especially when we had the iPad and preschool, and I'm really grateful that we have someone like you that's been reliable no matter when we call you or email you. That's what I'm going to say. And thank you so much for all you do. We do appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Once again. Thank you. Thank you very much for everything that you do for us here and for the schools as well. Extend our appreciation to all the staff. Okay, we understand. Amen. All right, so we're going to be moving on now to Agenda Item C, which is Public Participation on Any Matter Related to Board Responsibilities. We do ask that you call, if you want to call in, call the number of 860-665-8659, or you can raise your hand online, and we will acknowledge you. We do ask that you limit your participation to three minutes. Oh, in the room as well, yes. Absolutely. I'm sorry.
Okay. Hi, I'm Caitlin Bailey O'Neil. I live at 45 Avery Road in Newington. Over the summer, I emailed the Board of Education and Dr. Bremet to ask that my son be able to ride the school bus with his kindergarten sister, so I thank you for allowing me here tonight to address that. When the bus routes were posted before school started, I was kind of asked to be in two places at once. Ainsley is one of the first stops on the route in the morning, allowing me ample time to walk her up the street to the bus stop, walk home, and then walk my son Riley to school. She is one of the first stops on the way home, though. She's supposed to get home at 3:42, just 12 minutes after the bell rings, so there's really no way that I could meet Riley at school and walk home in time to get her off the bus. So because of that, I unfortunately have to add to the already difficult dismissal situation at the school. The renovation is going great. I applaud Mr. Smith and the team that helped figure out the staging, but it's still a construction zone and will be for the next two years, so drop-off and pickup are a little bit complicated because there's some temporary traffic problems, traffic patterns. While parents wait in their cars or outside, Mr. Smith and two other teachers try to match the children to cars or parents, release walkers on their own, keep an eye on kindergarteners, and make sure all the children are where they need to be. In his first Friday message of the year, Mr. Smith impressed upon parents just how challenging the situation is. This year, we have over 70 students dismissing from the cafeteria as we cannot have a separate kindergarten dismissal area. If your child is eligible for bus transportation, we would strongly encourage you to have them take the bus. My kindergartner is eligible for transportation, and I would love to follow the principal's encouragement, but I just don't feel safe asking my eight-year-old to navigate traffic patterns, all that stuff alone. I talk to the crossing guards every day, and, you know, I've seen cars run stop signs. I've seen them. I just don't trust after a long day of school that he's going to be aware enough of his surroundings to make it home safely. You know, just last Friday, we watched a car fly right past the crossing guard and stop very, very close to another third grader. So I just, I don't feel comfortable doing that. So I know there are other families that face this predicament each year. I don't know how many accommodations must be made in this. It needs to be a kindergartner that has an older sibling in the school that lives within the .75-mile walking radius. So I'm not sure how many kids that actually is, but I would ask that the policy be looked at again, and if possible, an exemption made so that we are not adding to a really difficult dismissal situation already at school. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Well, and I have exchanged emails, and tonight we do have a bus presentation. Hopefully you can stay for that so that you can hear what that kind of looks like district-wide. But yes, absolutely, your voice was heard, and that is one of the reasons why Mr. Barnes is here this evening with his lovely bus tie on. Doesn't get any better than that. All right.
Okay. Do we have anyone else which is to participate that's here in the room or online?
Is the phone ringing? We do probably hear it, right?
All right. I don't see anyone online, and the phone hasn't rung. So I am going to move on now to Agenda Item D, our Standing Committee Information Item. Our first report is going to come from the Student Policy Committee.
All righty. So we met on September 8th in a concerned constituent about the dress code at the middle school. It was myself, Beth, and Jessica, and Mr. Friesi had already kind of done the legwork to talk to the middle school principals to make sure that their dress code did reflect what the policy had worked on, and they were making some changes, and they had already made some changes. And I, we were just talking about why a crew neck, and he was going to follow up on that. So it was very productive, and the principals were very receptive, so I hope the constituent is happy.
Mr. Rand.
I know that constituent very well, and I'm just wondering, is there a timeline on when there will be another, they're expected to follow up? Do we have anything on that?
We do. So both of the middle schools have already moved forward with working with their staff on that. And as we know, I think with the implementation of new policy, sometimes it does take kind of conversations and opportunities to learn and understand why some of the changes being made are for the better and in the direction of the board. So right now, I know at both middle schools, we will be aligning to what the high school has right now, which is to follow the dress code policy at the school for wellness, with some minor requirements like, you know, shoes, athletic shoes, things like that, that would make most sense for them to participate in athletic events and activities. And we would say that probably within the next week or so, everything will be aligned. So right now, we're kind of in that phase.
Thank you, and thanks to the committee. I know that that constituent has some middle school ladies that were very concerned. They were just sharing their concern as well.
You know, just so, obviously, he was the constituent. So one of the things that the policy for people who are new, we've got some new student reps, is that we wanted to make sure that our policy was gender neutral, and that it wasn't, there was more to it than just gender neutral. It felt like the changes that had been made at the middle schools kind of maybe veered off of that a little bit, so we needed to bring it back to make sure that it represented all students. So that's why the change is being made. Just to clarify, it's not a change to the policy. The policy has not changed. It's just that the middle school teacher, the middle school principals had changed a little bit away from the policy we had agreed upon and voted on, so it's just going back to that.
Okay. Ms. Yow?
My question is for Danielle. That's okay?
Yes.
What changes are you referring to, and if the policy was in place, how were they able to veer away from that?
I think that's actually more a question for Mr. Friesi.
Sure, I'd be happy to answer that. So I would say that I'm not certain that it was necessarily that they changed the policy. They took the policy as the board had approved it, and then the implementation of a policy is kind of when we put it into practice. And we did know that in certain areas, such as wellness, where there are physical activities, maybe sometimes certain laboratory settings, such as a chem lab or places like that, there would be certain dress requirements necessary to be able to conduct yourself appropriately in that setting. A couple of ways in which they interpreted and implemented some of the language in the policy was that students had to wear a crew neck for wellness class, and that was one that the committee has felt is really unnecessary, that they, students can wear other things. Like when we think of athletic events, if you're a lacrosse player, a field hockey player, a basketball player, you wear a penny, right, with the appropriate athletic garments underneath and things like that. So, you know, the necessity of a crew neck, you know, is not necessarily the intention that met the, you know, policy as it was designed. So that was one of the major areas that we wanted to make sure that we could realign things. And the other, I think, was the length of the shorts. They did put kind of more of a length to it, and the way the current policy is written, it isn't as structured as that, and we were finding that in the other areas, other schools, all seven, well, we have seven schools total, in the five other schools, they weren't putting parameters around it, and things were just fine. So we wanted to realign it to that, too. What we did agree to from the very start of this is that we would use September and October to collect data on the implementation of the new policy, and then be able to come back together and determine if the implementation was, you know, meeting the intended or achieving the intended outcomes, or if there would be any necessary revisions that we would consider. Right now, we do have preliminary data that show that there have been no negative implications of implementing the policy as it is, so we're very pleased by that at this point. What we continue to do is learn more about things that may kind of cause either gender bias or unintended, right, gender bias, things like that, like a need for a crew neck that we can move away from and really, you know, won't cause any harm to the program. And that's what we're always looking into.
Thank you. Mr. Le Verrier?
May I ask Mr. Friesi a question?
Please.
So with the policy as it's written, it does indicate that a dress code violation is supposed to be a minor infraction and treated somewhat privately with the student. So how can you assure that your data collection is accurate if it's being considered a minor violation and perhaps maybe not even being reported at all?
That's correct, and some things won't be reported, and that wouldn't show up necessarily in the data. You know, I mean, we also are doing other things, like learning soft data about how it's going by talking to our wellness staff, talking to our teachers, asking questions, getting information that way as well. So it's not just the hard data of the minor infraction that would show up in a system that we have. So those will show up more quantitatively, right? But qualitatively, we are, we are talking to our staff and trying to understand it better, and we are talking to principals and administration to try to understand it. So that's, that's the information we're gathering as well. So it's a combination of the two. It isn't just, I don't want anyone to be thinking that it's just data in accordance with numbers and numeric. It's also qualitative.
Okay, so I do, I do appreciate that, and, you know, it's my concern, though, is that, because you'd said that there was no negative impacts that were reported, but it does sound like that there may be things that are, may not be actually reported. So do you agree with that general assessment?
I would agree that that's no different than previous ways in which we used to monitor dress code violations. So it's, it's equal. We're doing it the same as that way. We've always done it.
All right, fair enough. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Fletcher.
You're welcome. Mrs. Hutback?
If I may, may I ask Mr. Friesi a question?
You may do that.
Okay. My quick question for you, Mr. Friesi, was in looking at how this is working and anecdotal data being important, wondering if there's a way we can, and I hate to use the word like survey, but survey the teachers or kind of, kind of check in with them, like, you know, how is this going? And I think one of the big things that we had talked about was like having these conversations. So if somebody is in violation, making that a private conversation, because I think one of the reasons we put this into policy was because some of these people were being called out, and it just creates this body shame issue that we're trying to protect in schools. So I'm wondering then if we can survey the teachers and say, hey, like, what do you need help implementing? How can, is the policy working? How can we make it better, if I'm saying that correct? Lots of words.
We did say that we would look at this again in October, give it some time to settle down. Anecdotally, I think we got two people at the end of the table who can probably tell us, at least from the high school, or you can even participate, because I don't know if you're officially a student rep anymore, my friend. Can I address the students and ask how they're feeling about it? Is that okay?
Please.
My friends, I don't know who you are yet, because you haven't been formally introduced, but how, how do you feel it's going at the high school with the dress code? All three of you can respond. And I want to preface with everyone that I do have, you know, I do know Jimmy outside of school, so if what he says agrees with our dress code, it's not, I don't, so, I, he's not saying it just, yes, there's a personal bias with me and Mr. Vendetti, so.
Please go ahead.
Thank you for acknowledging that, Mrs. Droste. I do not sit in this board this evening as, you know, as an official student rep, but I do, I'm here this evening for two reasons. I was actually interested in the new policy review, especially both on the transportation presentation and the dress codes, particularly. But, more pressing matters, here are our new student representatives. This is Tricia Iyer, our senior board of ed rep this year, and Maggie Woods. Maggie Woods.
Nice to meet you all. So I know in years past at the high school, the dress code's been a bit of a thing that people aren't sure about a little bit, in terms of teachers, different teachers enforcing it differently, some not saying anything, some like pulling kids aside or saying things in front of kids. And so this year, and kind of at the end of last year, some things were arranged a little bit more. So there's less, less rules regarding headwear and students' clothing, so like, shoulders aren't as much of an issue anymore for a lot of people. So I know that a lot of people were pleased with that decision in the high school. But I'd say so far at the high school, the dress code, I feel, has been a lot more like agreeable for students in the past few months with the changes that have been made.
Nice to meet you all as well. I would also like to include that I think it's a lot more fair, like, as we were saying, we were trying to make it gender neutral, because last year I noticed a lot of girls, like especially during like the spring and summertime, were being like called aside or even just like in the middle of class, being told that their shirts were like too short or that the straps weren't thick enough, things like that. But I did see a lot of boys wearing like Playboy shirts, things like that, which I don't really think was quite fair. And that was addressed at the beginning of the year as well, and like assembly presentations, too, that like, that wouldn't be tolerated and that, and like, I'd never heard that before. So I think the adjustment was rather nice.
Yes, Ms. Yow?
I just wanted to comment if I could. She had said that boys were wearing like Playboy shirts. I thought they couldn't wear things with...
That was previously.
Even before, I thought that wasn't allowed. Is, I know in the previous dress code, I didn't know they were allowed to wear things with those type of logos. Were they?
I know, no alcohol or drug logos. I'd have, I'd have to check on the actual policy, whether that specifically rules out that.
Ms. Hutback?
If I may, I think, is it, is it Maggie? Maggie, and both of you, really well-spoken and impressive, and thank you for being here and getting to know you. But I think one of the issues that Maggie hit upon, to your point, is that some, and, you know, as Danielle and I can say, working in a school, some teachers were enforcing it, some teachers weren't, and it seems like what you're saying is, what you were finding as a student perspective is that a female whose shoulder was showing was being called out in front of the class, but the Playboy bunny on a male shirt was being let ride, perhaps. I wasn't there, I'm just trying to interpret. So I think part of creating and looking in depth at this policy and having some training for our teachers was to really look at the impact the dress code has on a student's mental well-being in school. And so hopefully, that type of situation can be avoided, that, that gray space, that fuzzy line, like you were saying, it was really hard to tell, like, is this dress code, is this not dress code? I can wear it in this class, but I can't wear it in that. Hopefully, that is gone, and there's more consistency for everyone.
I want to add that while I was an employee at the high school, it wasn't just the boys wearing shirts that you're describing. Okay, so it was overall, it was boys and girls.
Yet again, when acknowledged, not an official student rep. But off of Ms. Hutback's point and Maggie's, I think, I know Ms. Tigno never liked those shirts in the first place, and this year especially with regulations such as those, phone use, headphones, all that kind of stuff, because throughout COVID, and I'm sure you guys are going to touch upon this at some point, but throughout COVID, things became a lot more lax. We didn't want it to happen that way, but it happened. And I think this year specifically, Ms. Tigno finally put her foot down and said, hey, this stuff isn't going to slide. So this year specifically, it was actually within the freshman orientation slides presentation, I know, because I looked through it, and she said specifically, this is not allowed, alcohol references, drug references, and profane language like Playboy magazine t-shirts, like, I don't know, Virginity Rocks t-shirts. I'm just naming what I've seen around the school. But specifically this year, I think the reason why this issue has been more prevalent, like the dress code's always been more prevalent, but this specific one is more about the fact that Tigno's finally putting her foot down, saying, hey, this, enough is enough. Just want to put it out there.
Thank you, Jimmy. Any other questions or comments related to the policy, student policy? All right, seeing none, I am going to move on to item number six, which is our report from our new student representative. So take it away.
Hello again. So we have a couple points, being that this is our first report we're doing. So things at school are just starting to kick off, and a big focus of especially student council this year, and I know Ms. Tigno wanted to emphasize this, was increasing student morale and teacher morale and getting people, especially after COVID, like more excited to be at school and get involved. And so we have a couple different clubs and sports that we have going on right now. So the music and arts department, the Fall Play and Spring Musical have been announced. The Fall Play is a Christmas carol, and the auditions have already begun. And the Spring Musical this year is the Drowsy Chaperone. And the Chamber Choir is planning a trip to New York City this year, where they will be seeing two Broadway shows, Wicked and Hadestown, and performing in a church in New York City.
Do you need a chaperone?
They do need more chaperones.
Please call me.
And then we have a lot of sports this year. It's still early in the season, so there's not a lot to share, but cheer and football had their first game last week. I think Newington played pretty well. We did lose, unfortunately, but we have many more games. We have another game tomorrow at Conard, actually. Girls volleyball, they have a game tonight, so this is based on yesterday, but they're on a 2-0 streak. And Alyssa Dugas, who's a junior at Newington High School, was nominated for Game Time Connecticut's Athlete of the Week. So if you're interested, you can go to Game Time Connecticut and place your vote. Girls field hockey has won their first game so far against E.O. Smith. Girls Swim and Dive won their first meet yesterday against East Hartford. Boys soccer is 2-0 right now, and they won yesterday against Bloomfield. Girls soccer has won two games and tied one. Girls cross country won their first meet yesterday against Rocky Hill, and boys cross country put up a tough fight yesterday against Rocky Hill, but unfortunately, they lost. And then our first home football game, we had a lot of people show up for that. That was a really exciting thing for everyone, a big turnout. A lot of first responders came too, which was really nice. That was the goal in the dedicating of the game to the first responders. And yeah, that's it for sports.
All right. So we've had a lot of events this year so far, I think, for like the beginning of the school year, and a few more coming up. So on August 17th, we had freshman orientation, which I think went very well. We had a lot of clubs participating in that. The 24th, the day before the first day of school, Ms. Tigno had our first staff meeting where students actually volunteered to help greet the staff, which was super nice, like everybody got to see each other for the first time, and like, I think everybody's morale was raised by that. After that, we had, last week, September 7th, Suicide Prevention Awareness Day, where we wore teal and purple to spread awareness, and announcements were made over the intercom and all of that to help spread awareness. September 9th, we had open house, also went very well. A lot of families showed up. It was very neat, because we haven't had like an in-person open house in so long, so it was nice to get that all set up again. And National Honor Society ended up helping out for most of that, along with DECA and student council, but things have like really started to like, started up at school, which was nice. And for our first home football game on September 9th, it was Red, White, and Blue Day. So many people had so much school spirit for that, which was super exciting. And then tomorrow is going to be our first themed Thursday, Blue and Gold Day, where we're going to be wearing Nor Easter merch, and if you don't have any, blue and gold. And students and staff were asked to donate at least $1 to participate in this spirit day, and the proceeds are going to the family whose house was destroyed in the fire last week. So we're really trying to fundraise as much money as we can for that. Student council is in charge of that. And then the last thing for this month is on the 29th of September, where we're going to have an involvement fair. It's also the first time in a while, where freshmen and new students will get to like see all of the different clubs that are going to be available at New see all of the different clubs that are going to be available at Newington High School. And like they'll be introduced to the advisors and some of the officers in the clubs and get a chance to really see what's being offered for them.
And then lastly, we have, uh, a couple of clubs that have kicked off, but before I get to that, I want to touch on the themed Thursday. So that's part of our social emotional learning at the high school. So every month we'll have a different Thursday with a different social emotional learning program set in place for students to do during their advisory periods. And we've decided as student council and with Ms. Tigno, that we're going to match a spirit day with those SCL programs to get students more involved. So being that tomorrow is about family of learners and community at the high school, it's going to be blue and gold. But we have a couple more coming up in the next few months that we're excited to tell you about in the future. Um, now with clubs, student council has our first meeting tomorrow. Um, we have a couple of things planned. We're going to talk about homecoming, um, our pep rally, we're bringing back pep rallies this year. So that's exciting, a lot of people are excited about that. Um, but student council so far has gotten off pretty well. We had our executive board meeting today, which was our senior class officers and our student council officers met together to discuss things that they think could be improved in the school. And we also helped talk about homecoming and getting, reaching out to students to make sure they are aware of everything that's going on. Then our other clubs, Latin Club and Adventure Club had their first meetings after school today. As did FBLA had their first meeting last week on September 7th. And Key Club was also after school today for their first meeting.
All right, and then just a few more clubs. So, um, we have DECA. Um, our advisor, Ms. Miller, has distributed information about the power and SEM trips this year that are going to be in DC and Orlando, which is super exciting for everybody. Um, we already had our first meeting of the year, but we're going to have another meeting this month on the 19th. And things have gotten off to a really good start. We've been able to sell, um, a lot of like school spirit type merch. We definitely sold a lot of red, white and blue t-shirts and hoodies, which was super great. Um, and yeah, we have like a lot of cool stuff happening this year for DECA, which I'm really excited for. Um, and then we do have the DECA president here with us today as well, so. And then National Honor Society, so National Honor Society is meeting tomorrow for their first meeting, where officers will be elected. But they've already started up with helping with open house, helping, um, set up with books over the summer as well. Um, so that's going to be, I hope, a great year. Um, but there is, um, a small thing with the parking spaces, um, changing. So last year, a few students who were not in National Honor Society were using the National Honor Society student parking lot. Um, so it's been changed that this year, all of the students have to stay in the student parking lot, even if they are a National Honor Society and like that privilege has been revoked from us. Um, and so I did want to mention a few students had come up with a solution for it. I don't know if it'll be perfect, I don't know if it'll be implicated, but I thought I should bring it up anyways. Um, so the lots in this, in the old National Honor Society parking lot were numbered. So we were thinking that we could assign numbers to each student so that, um, like each student has their designated parking space. So if somebody else is in their parking space, they are, they'll be able to report it to administration, like write down the license plate and give it to administration. And if that student is following school policy and has their like parking pass, um, filled out, the, um, appropriate measures would be taken for that student, like the consequences that are required. Um, and they just thought that that would be just a simple way to fix the problem. Because I know it's hard and difficult, especially like kids come in late, like if they have period one or two open, they come in late or they have to like leave early. It's hard for like, um, like administration to go out and check like all of the cars to make sure that they have their parking pass or if they really are National Honor Society members. But I feel like if the lots are assigned and like if we had like even like a little pass or a sticker to put on the car saying that you are a National Honor Society and to be in the lot that way, that the problem would be dealt with much better. Women in Leadership also is going to be meeting soon. Their first meeting is a little bit later, um, in October 4th, 4th. But we have, um, started up with activities already. Um, last year we started placing bins in the bathrooms with female hygiene products. So that started up again this year, students are bringing in supplies that we can put in the bathroom, which is really nice, cause it's like, if you come into school not prepared, everything's there for you already. So that will be really helpful. And I know that gender neutral bathrooms are being constructed in the high school, so they will be placed there as well. Um, and then the last club that I have to mention, I think, um, this is going to be a little bit longer, but, um, Stop the Stigma is, um, a very important club in our school. It, um, goes over a lot of things that students find important related to mental health and problems that people oftentimes brush over because, as the name of the club implies, there's a lot of stigma around it. And last year, at the end of the year, um, May 2020, we sent out a mental health survey to figure out just how students were feeling about school. Um, not everybody responded, but it was completely anonymous. We got 654 responses, um, from the students and I just wanted to, um, mention some of the statistics that we got and some of the things that students had to say. So this first part is going to be a little, like I'm just going to be throwing a bunch of numbers at you, so I apologize for that, but I don't really know what better way to word it. So the first question asked in the survey was if you struggle with a certain thing, and I will be going through the percentages of people who answered the form who felt this. People who experienced anxiety, 56.6%. Sadness, 34.9%. Hopelessness, 21.6%. Low energy, 53.4%. Feeling exhausted, 54.6%. Irritability, 45.7%. Racing thoughts, 37.5%. Worthlessness, 23.2%. Self-criticism, 48.3%. Mind distracting them from work, 50.6%. Feeling restless, 30.4%. Feeling tearful, 22.2%. Brain fog, 37.9%. Burnout, 40.4%. Constant worrying, 43.9%. Feeling invalidated, 25.2%. Having to mask emotions, 37.8%. I feel like this is a very big problem because a lot of these were either above 50% or right about at 50%. And this is for not only one grade, but for all of the grades in the school. Of people who felt anxiety, 15.1% of people said that they don't feel anxiety. 34.1% said that they sometimes feel anxiety. And 49.4 people, percent of people responded that they do feel anxiety. And on a scale from one to five, for how often does stress affect them as a student? At one, so one would be that it doesn't affect you very much at all. We have a very small number of 4.6%. A very small number for number two as well, 12.5%. But as we get to three, four and five, we have 28.1%, 33.2%, 21.6%. For people who feel, um, hopeless and have an extreme lack of motivation, 38.7% of people said that they experienced this and 41.1% of people said that they experienced this sometimes. For the pandemic, the numbers were a bit more even, um, on a scale from one time, how much has the pandemic affected you? At one, we have 17.6%. At two, we have 18.2%. At three, we have 23.4%. And at four, we have 20.9%. At five, 19.9%. And do you experience trouble concentrating on things such as schoolwork or activities? 48.9% said sometimes and 35.9% said yes. These statistics are very disheartening to look at. I was reading through a lot of the responses, some of them were like checkboxes and then like other. I was reading some of them, it was extremely saddening. It was kind of hard to look through. There were people who said that they feel like on that list that I read out at the beginning of all the different feelings, there were people who said that they experienced all of this all the time, that it's extremely hard for them to come to school, that they've been suffering because of it and that they feel like they have nobody to reach out. So the last question on this form was suggestions from students that they think would be helpful for them. We are children at school, so like, I don't know, average age is probably like 16. We don't really know how to solve these issues. A lot of people don't really know that they're experiencing these issues because they don't realize that like the problems that they're having are caused because of anxiety or because like, they don't want to come to school, not because they're lazy, but they don't want to come, come to school because when they're there, they feel left out, they feel like they don't belong. Um, so there are a few topics that I would like to hit on. A lot of students would appreciate more mental health days. We have two a year and you're not allowed to take them like in a row with each other. And it's, I think that the students understand, because many people said that they understand that it's not like feasible to like have like a lot of mental health days. But I think the main suggestion was four, one per quarter. And that way it'll be better for them, because you can't really pick and choose what day that you're not going to be feeling well or choose like how long you're not going to be feeling well for. And I think what a lot of students had to do was make their mental health day Friday, so that they would have like the three days off to be able to recuperate and come back. Um, I know I took a mental health day after AP exams, it's extremely taxing. Um, but like, I think like, like so many people were saving their mental health days. They were like, okay, I'm going to save my mental health day for the day after SATs or the day after AP exams are over or after finals are over. Well, that doesn't really work, but like if they had, like if they had to come in for final, but they wanted to make it up, yeah. Um, and like I feel like that shouldn't be the case. Like if you're having a bad day and you really think that you're not able to make it to school, you should be able to take that mental health day off instead of being like, no, I need to save it for after SATs because I know I'm not going to be able to show up the day after. Um, another thing that was mentioned was more social emotional learning days. I know we had one last year, which was super fun. Um, it was very relaxing, especially in my AP classes, because it was like in second semester and those AP classes were really hard, like they were just like piling work on us. And I know a lot of the other classes, because like there was a lot of assessments around that time, there's just like so much work. And finally getting a break in some of those classes was so nice for students because like it was stressing them out and like they come to class every day expecting to do like a bucket load of work and then go to the next class and do a bucket load of work. So, um, people have asked for an SEL day every semester or an SEL day every quarter. These were given on half days. Um, so like, I know half days are a little bit different now at the high school because we have lunch during the day now, but, um, if that could happen, I think people would really appreciate it. And then, um, one of the last points that were brought up is actually having more staff to be able to deal with mental health at the high school. So like more counselors, more, more social workers and even counselors and social workers that are specialized in like a specific kind of area to be able to be more helpful. And I know that even I've experienced this too, like you need a counselor in a moment, you need somebody to talk to, an adult in the building who's not actively teaching a class. And every single like adult that you're supposed to go to is busy. And counselors, like their only job isn't to talk to students, like they have to do things with scheduling, deal with graduation and all of this, and they're not available all of the time. And a lot of those rooms like often have like a lot of people in it and that can be very overwhelming for students. So I think a lot of people just want to have more options of who they can go to and be able to actually go to someone and not feel like they have to cry in the hallway whenever they're dealing with something. Um, and the last thing, this is a little bit of a smaller thing, but, um, mental health breaks. During, um, last year and the year before, we had mask breaks during block days. And now it's been changed to like you can't go outside during block days, like for breaks anymore, to take a walk or anything like that. Um, but like, I know some of our teachers still give breaks because it's a very long period of class, but we're not allowed to go outside and some teachers don't do it because it's not required anymore. And I do feel like, um, it could be really helpful if it was even just like five minutes during a block day, because 90 minutes, you're sitting there, you're watching a presentation, you're listening, you're taking notes and like there's no like break in between. And I know that was so helpful for a lot of kids last year, especially like being able, when the weather was nicer, to go on walks, like just a lap around the school or even just like a section of the school and to walk back, because it was distressing. Like kids our age aren't meant to be sitting around all day, especially if you don't have an open period. On a block day, it's like you go to period one, okay, it's done. And then we have homeroom and there's going to be an activity in homeroom. Then you go to your next class and your next class and your next class and you're sitting the whole time and you feel restless and fidgety. And then when you're feeling restless and fidgety, you're told to like take it, like take a step back or like you shouldn't be doing that or you're making too much noise. And I don't know, I just feel like something with that should be changed. Um, I'm sorry if I didn't say that very eloquently. But, um, that's all I had to say. Did you have anything to add? Do you have anything to add?
I don't care.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions, uh, from board members? Ms. Young?
I want to make a comment. So, uh, I was someone who took a lot of AP classes as well. So what you said resonating with me, so I'm a little bit emotional. Um, so I understand that burnout, I felt that. I was in most of the clubs that you, I mean, FBLA, most of those. And, um, as you sat here and you spoke about that, to me, I was like, wow, I remember feeling like that in high school. I remember taking four, five, six AP classes and I was like burnt out. So, um, I, I do agree that we should, and I can't make this decision, we should talk about, uh, more mental health days, mental health is real. Um, someone who has anxiety myself, like I understand, you know, how, how that can become overwhelming and you just feel like you're just like stuck, you can't, you just have more and more and more to do until you burn out. So that's something I hope, you know, the board will appreciate. Um, and, uh, the breaks that you were talking about, um, I do understand that that's something that's needed, especially when so much is expected of you. You're preparing for college, you want to make sure, um, that you're making your grades, that you're in these clubs, that you're doing everything to get you where you need, but you're still a person and you're still, um, and I want you to, you know, say that like I, I've been through this, so I understand and I could feel the emotion like that you were projecting. So I wanted to let you know, like I heard you and I understand and I've been through it personally. So, um, thank you for sharing that and your personal, um, experience with us. And I am and we are as board listening to you. So that's what I wanted to say.
All right, well, thank you very much. Mr. Brenda?
Yeah, I was just going to say that I, I think some of the points that you raised and, and the whole report was great, but obviously the, the last part of it is, you know, very eye-opening and some of the things that you said and the stats that you provided too. And I kept thinking, maybe it would be great if you were invited to a policy meeting and they could discuss some of the stuff that, yeah, that's what I was trying to say to you. So I think, yeah, I think the policy chair will, will probably be reaching out because I think you have some great ideas and the students that provided that as well. Um, one of the things that I was thinking of too, as you were talking about the Stop the Stigma club is, I don't know that it exists, I don't think it does at the middle schools, but I would love for somehow, because I feel like through the years now, the Stop the Stigma club has really kind of developed their footprint in the high schools really well. And I think it would be great if through your advisor, you could maybe work with somebody in each middle school to see if we can start to get a similar club, the same club in each middle school with maybe, you know, just start with the eighth graders or something like that. So, so their understanding too, a little bit more about what they can expect when they get to the high school. And now you have, you know, it also is a recruitment pipeline, right? So you also have that opportunity, but I think, you know, we talk a lot about early intervention and you read off a lot of stats and, and my daughter's in middle school. So right away I started to think about, I wonder what those numbers would be in middle school. And I bet you they're, they're probably way higher in some percentages. And I think that your club, uh, could do a lot of good in the middle schools to help those students, to help them understand that, you know, it's okay to talk about this stuff and to hear what they need to, because everything you said is so important. And I think that, you know, we often talk about middle school as like that, that time when things start to happen, you know, things start to happen in that brain and the body and everything. And I think it would be really great to see in the middle school. So I hope that that's something you can pursue.
Yes.
Sorry, I'm a little bit awkward. Um, I totally agree with that, I think that would be really great. Um, I know, middle school, seventh grade, worst year ever. And I think everybody agrees that seventh grade was the worst. Yeah, yeah, but, um, yeah, I think it's something that, and like I feel like there's like a lot of like clubs in the high school that like, um, like mention like a lot of issues that like, we never really got to talk about in middle school, like middle school, the only club I can think of that I was a part of was student council. But like now we have like a women in leadership club and that was so cool to go to the meetings and be able to discuss problems that like women face at school. And, um, I did have a question, so in the high school, we have, um, the names can really hurt us program. And I think that that was very helpful last year. And I do know that a lot of students have actually been saying that they want to talk about these kind of issues a lot more, that they want more assemblies like this, because not only was somebody giving a presentation on the matter, but students were allowed to go up to the mic, talk about their experiences, talk about if they were a victim, if they did something to somebody else that they wanted to apologize for, if they saw. did something to somebody else that they wanted to apologize for, if they saw something, if they stood up for something. And sharing those experiences was very eye opening for a lot of students, especially students who had never experienced anything like that before. And I feel like if you're a student, you've never like, like you hear about like, we have a bullying assembly. You've never been bullied before, you've never seen it before. You're like, this isn't really important, it doesn't affect me, I've never seen it. They're making a big deal out of it. But then you see those students come up to the mic and they're like cheering up and they're saying their story and it makes you realize. And I wanted to know if there was a similar program in the middle school? Anything like that, like an assembly, like it doesn't have to be the names can really hurt us program, but like anything like that?
I, I don't know of anything like that. Again, my daughter started middle school when COVID was going on. So like open houses, I've, I've voted in the middle school and that's it. So I'm actually during open house, like that will be my first time really seeing the school, but to my knowledge, that doesn't exist, doesn't mean it doesn't. Um, and really quick, I, I asked Dr. Fletcher if I could ask you a really quick question. I think if you went to the middle schools with the Stop the Stigma Club and, and any club like this really that, that deals with everything that's going on and you were up there on a stage talking to those middle schoolers, I, I mean, they would be blown away. You know, they would look up to you and, and I think that it's really important to remember that the purpose of the club would translate so well to those middle school kids and you would undoubtedly save a bunch of kids just by doing that one, that one moment of being there and helping them start that club. So I really hope it's something that you can take back and start to maybe just brainstorm. I'm not expecting like tomorrow, there's, there's a club at Wallace. But I think it's a, I think it's a really cool opportunity to kind of, kind of spread your message and, and spread the club's mission into the middle schools and really help those kids out. And I think, and I hope by doing so, you might actually kind of help out the kids in the high school that, that, you know, maybe don't have, they feel hopeless, right? Now you're giving them, maybe we can give them a purpose, help, help the other kids, help the middle school kids, um, and have a little bit more purpose and have that connection with younger kids that, that you can help their journey throughout high school. So it's just something I'd love for you to look into.
I really love that idea and I will definitely make sure that happens. And I love the point you brought up of giving high school kids purpose because, I don't know, that was just so sweet. Um, but yeah, thank you.
Dr. Brenner?
I just want to commend our student reps. Bravo for your first go, go for. And, uh, Mr. Vendetti, I hereby dub the student rep emeritus.
Thank you, superintendent.
But actually what I wanted to comment on was, um, you had made the comment about this, the feminine hygiene products. There's now a state law that goes into effect July 1st that's going to require that we help you with that. So we're in the process of planning for that. Um, and I can't even tell how many emails I've gone back and forth about that, but that's a story for another day. Um, I'm going to talk to Ms. Tiggo about your, um, national honor society parking issue. I want to get a little more information on that. The mental health day, we can, we can figure that out because, you know, all you have to do is stay within the allowable absences so that you don't lose credit. Truth be told, and I went to high school a long time ago, I had a couple of mental health days and they weren't even on the books. I just said, mom, can I not go to school today? And she called the school. I mean, so, um, you know, that is not out of the realm of possibilities so that you don't have to be, as long as you don't fall into that, you know, too many absences, but something tells me that won't be an issue for, for this team tonight. Um, and I like the idea of the breaks too. I'll talk to Ms. Tiggo about that, but I just want to, uh, praise you for a job well done out of the gate. So back to you, Dr. Fletcher.
Can I ask, I'm going to ask a quick question. In the, with the honor society, I'm familiar with the parking and how they allowed you to do that. Did you actually have a tag that hung from the mirror? There were tags that hung from the mirror?
I, were there? Okay. Okay. Yeah. Cause I was in an honor.
I'm talking about parking permit.
Yeah. There's a sticker that said national honor society parking permit was on, it was on my daughter's car.
It was on the car. Okay. The reason I ask is because employees also had tags that hung from their mirrors and that's where they parked as well. So I think that something like that would work efficiently.
Thank you, Mrs. Tros. Um, so to Mr. Fletcher's point, um, this, the new pro, the new program in place, it does, get out of here. Um, so the idea behind this one specifically is that if students have assigned parking spaces, students are more likely to police other students. Um, and Wagner's only one person or Mr. Wagner at the SRO. Um, and I don't, I'm not familiar with the other security guards' names at the moment, but, um, there are only a couple of people, it's a security team. If students are policing other students, it's a lot easier to tell who's not supposed to be there and who is supposed to be there. And that's the idea behind the new system that was suggested, just saying.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Tros?
So I, I want to move this along because I can't take a mental health day because I teach seventh grade and I'm so sad that was not your favorite grade. Um, but so maybe, so listen, there was a fundraiser that was done a while ago where, and I think, I don't know who did it, but you could like paint, there was a paint and it doesn't last forever, but it lasts for a really long time. So you could sell it to parents and they could decorate and you could make money, they could decorate their spots because the parents would geek out about that. Be a good fundraiser for you. So spot number 72 is Jimmy's. I'm telling you, I could see Meredith going a little crazy decorating that spot because we did it for, um, cross country too, but we did it with talks, so that was fun.
Michelle? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm half asleep. You're going to have to forgive me.
Um, I'll be very quick. I, you were reading off the numbers and I heard like, I feel cheerful and that was one of the very lowest percentages. So I just think that was really sad. But I, I appreciate you personally taking the time to go through that and tell us about it. Um, you know, all of those percentages and reading them off and, um, reading the comments. So I think all the work that you're doing, um, or planning to do throughout the year, I think will really help students. And I love Mr. Branda's thoughts about Stop the Stigma Club and moving it down to the middle school level. I have a seventh grader as well and there's lots of bedtime takes forever because we have to go through the events of the day. And, you know, there's probably lots of children that don't have an opportunity like that at home. So having it in the schools, especially at that age when lots is happening, I think is a fantastic idea. So I just wanted to say that and thank you. And look forward to hearing more, um, SEL things and spirit days and themes and everything that you're doing to just encourage people to, um, participate and enjoy going to school and look forward to things. So thank you.
Michelle?
My question was for Dr. Brenner. Um, one of the things she mentioned that is that she. Sorry. Can you guys hear me now? Um, one of the things you mentioned and this is that they didn't, they felt like they didn't have anyone to talk to. Um, how can we as a board address that? I feel like that's super important, not just with COVID, just in general, like Amy said, and she said the numbers of, you know, if they felt cheerful were really low. So maybe, I don't know how we could do that or make that available.
Thank you for bringing that up because that was one of the things I forgot to bring up, even though it's in my notes. Two things, uh, Mrs. Redman is going to do a plans proposal for additional therapeutic supports at the school. Plus she and I have been in constant contact about some possible FCL grants at the state level, COVID money that the state's going to push down. So we're waiting for those grant requests to come out and she and I will partner to write it because we're on the same page. We'd like more mental health supports. She wants to prevent substance abuse. Uh, that's another one of her very strong, uh, emotional platforms. So thank you for bringing it up and thank you, Ms. Yop, for reminding me to, to say something about that because it's absolutely critically important.
All right. And thank you both very much for the report tonight. Now we're going to move on to agenda item E, which is our new business. And we have on the line with us representatives from Verage Solar and they're going to give us, I believe, a brief update?
Yes, if I may, and, um, if I'll let the Verage folks introduce themselves. Thank you for your patience. I just, it came to my attention, um, that we're heading into the Verage work and working to, um, make sure that goes smoothly. And a lot of our board members were not on the Board of Education when the Verage project was discussed previously. So we wanted to be able to provide a quick update to the board about what the game plan is, straight from Verage's mouth. To be clear, none of them have started yet. The first project is slated to be Patterson. So I'm going to turn it over to, uh, Katie, are you going to be the master of ceremonies?
Yeah, I will be.
Wonderful. I'll turn it right over to you and if you need to project anything, let me know.
Okay. Perfect. Here, I'm just going to pull up the document.
Is there a way to increase their volume?
Crackly?
I, I tried to hear a line one up, so maybe they could speak again.
Just try it again.
Yep. We're having trouble hearing you. Can you speak louder or turn up your volume or?
Yeah. Can you hear me better now?
It's a little bit better, yes.
Okay. All right. Bear with me because I don't use Google Meet normalized. So do I need to head?
We do, yeah, we do have a presentation. If we could share the screen in some fashion.
So on your dashboard, you should have a box with an arrow in the middle. If you click that on, it allows you to present and then you click to share your full screen and then you can click on your tab that has your presentation.
Yep. I see that button. Thank you.
Yep. If that doesn't quite work, there's a workaround, but let me know if that works.
I am not going to network on my own brand. Are, are you able to set it up?
Yep. Um, I should be able to do it right now. Let me see here.
You got it. We see it.
Perfect. All right. Um, so my name's Katie Shelton. I work as a developer for Verage. We're a commercial solar company based in Hartford, Connecticut. Um, been working with the town since 2020 on a portfolio of projects for town owned buildings and a few of the sites included, um, some of the schools within the town of Newington. Um, also on the line today is Brian Smith, one of the co-founders of Verage, and then Adam Taff from Tate and Energy, who's a owner's rep that's been working with the town on these projects as well. Brian, if you want to jump into the next slide here?
Absolutely. Um, the one thing I can preface to, just if anybody's looking at the, uh, the presentation and sees an awful long number of pages and slides, um, a lot of these are screenshots and snippets just to show, as you'll see when we go through it, things like permits, drawing sets and things. So ideally we can proceed through this pretty quickly and don't want you to get scared by the number of pages.
Thank you. Um, so keeping it very brief here, what we've modeled out are what's called PPA's or power purchase agreements for each of the locations. Basic concept is that there is no out of pocket expense to the town whatsoever. Solar arrays are going to be designed and installed at each of the locations we're going to chat about today. On Verage's dime, we will own, operate and maintain the equipment and you will purchase the power that the solar arrays produce at a substantially reduced rate, uh, per kilowatt hour from what you're currently paying with the utility company. And that rate is locked in and fixed for a full 20-year term. The benefits are there's no investment whatsoever. We have all of the operating risk and, um, ongoing maintenance responsibilities and you all are benefiting from the clean energy that's produced at a reduced rate. Part of the economics that go into these projects in order to offer you that reduced rate for power is a contract called a ZREC. Um, and that is something that we've locked in for each of those locations. It is a revenue contract with the utility company for fixed 15-year terms and that helps support the project and our upfront investment in the equipment in order to offer you that reduced rate for power. Um, in terms of billing, how everything will work, your current utility bill with Eversource is going to be substantially reduced by having onsite solar. So for every kilowatt hour that the system produces, we're going to be offsetting your generation, transmission and distribution charges on your utility bill. You will receive a separate bill from Verage, uh, which is billed out at the reduced PPA rate for the power that we're supplying through the solar array. At the end of the PPA term, some common questions that come up are, you know, what happens with the equipment? It's a 20-year PPA for each of these locations. You have a few options at the end of the term. One would be to continue to purchase power from the solar array for, uh, up to three, five-year increments, so an additional 15 years if you elect to do so. The usable life of the equipment is 35 years. So there's plenty of useful productions still left in the system that you can purchase at a substantially reduced rate if you elect to do so at the end of that contract term. The other option would be to purchase the system for fair market value at the end of that 20-year PPA, really a nominal fee at that point in time. And then the third, third option would be for Verage to come out and remove the equipment and restore your roofs at the end of the term. Again, it's on our dime. There's no cost, uh, to the town whatsoever. Uh, so touched upon this already, but benefits are obviously there's no investment to the town or the Board of Education whatsoever. You all are going to benefit from clean energy at a reduced rate through fixed PPA contracts and Verage is responsible for all of the operating risk and ongoing maintenance of the system. For all of the locations that we're going to chat about to, tonight, they are essentially installation ready. We've gone through all of the development milestones already for these sites, including a third-party structural analysis, um, with a company coming out, completing structural for the facility and validating that you have the available collateral loading to support a solar array being installed onsite. The second piece is roof warranty coordination. Um, so we've worked with, uh, the town to collect roof warranty documentation for each of the site. And we've gone through what's called an overburden lever process. It's a standard within the industry where we will work with the roofing manufacturer. We'll have a pre-installation inspection completed. So before anything is loaded or installed on the roof, they will come out and inspect the roof. They will come back out and do a post-inspection once the solar array is installed, validating that everything was installed according to manufacturer's specifications. And we've not voided any roofing warranties. So if you guys have roofing warranties intact, which you do for all of these locations, it's not going to be voided by the presence of onsite solar. Um, I'm just including a link here. This was provided, uh, to Lou and a few other members of the Board of Ed on the 19th, which is a Dropbox link to all of the documents that we're going to be running through today, including the permit sets and stamp racking drawings, uh, for each of these locations. Running through the equipment spec sheets here, there are three main components for each, um, project. First is going to be inverters. We're using CPS inverters for these projects, which will carry a standard 10-year warranty. We're using phono solar modules. And we're also using Unirack for the racking system. It is a fully ballasted system, which means that we're not penetrating the roofing membrane at these locations. Flip sheets are going to go down on the roof. Racking will lay on top of the flip sheet and then it's weighted down with ballast blocks. And again, structural has been completed to validate that each of these facilities can support, uh, this type of installation. Looking at Elizabeth Green here. Uh, this is the first layout for Elizabeth Green. We are just under 260 kilowatt DC system size at this location. Running through the PPA model here with you, the information that we're working off of is the 2020 utility bills that we have on file. Um, since then, your utility costs, we would expect would have increased substantially. And if they have not yet, they will be with the cost of energy on the rise substantially. From July 1st of last year to July 1st of this year, there was a 77% increase overall on utility costs through Eversource. So if it has not been reflected on your bill to date, it certainly will be coming up. Looking at the 2020 bill, your offsettable rate with Eversource was 9.77 cents. We would be locking you in at a PPA rate, which is fixed for the full 20-year term at 3.5 cents, again fixed for 20 years. That would provide you with 537,000. That would provide you with $537,731 in savings over the PPA term without you investing a dime in the equipment. Just a snippet here of the purchase contract, which was executed in October of 2021. And a copy of the structural letter that was completed by BL Engineering, showing that you have 5 pounds per square foot of loading capacity for this specific facility. This is the stamped racking drawing from Unirack that shows the layout for the facility and the layout for the racking. And this is the permit set that's been prepared. I know it's probably a little bit hard to see here, but what we're showing you is where your existing equipment and electrical utility is onsite. And then where the proposed equipment is going to be located at the facility. Right, if you go to the next page here. This is a closer-up diagram that will show you the equipment that's going to be installed on the exterior of that wall. Basically, it's a new 400-amp panel and then the utility meter and disconnect. Go ahead, Brian. Again, just an aerial showing you where the equipment is going to be located in relation to the building. Copy of the permit for this location, for Elizabeth Green, we have both the electrical and building permit in hand. And a copy of the construction schedule. So we are anticipating that we'll be able to kick off this project the beginning of November. The final completion will be in March of 2023. What you'll see here in the schedule and all the schedules to follow for the other locations is that we're anticipating completing all of the equipment installation here before the end of the year. And then we'll just be waiting on the electrical gear to be delivered, which is gonna be the beginning of 2023 in order to wrap up this installation. For John Patterson. We've designed a 280.8 kilowatt DC system size. And for the PPA model, using your 2020 bills, your utility rate was 9.93 cents. We're locking you in at a fixed PPA rate of 6 cents per kilowatt hour for the full 20-year term, providing $418,347 in savings. Again, executed contracts from June of 2021. Structural letter for BL, again, showing you a 5 pounds per square foot of available loading. And then, as with the last project, we have the stamped racking drawings from Unirack. And just wanted to include this here, there was a revision request to remove modules off of the media center roof. What you'll see here circled in red is the area that we've proposed to relocate those modules. Just waiting on the go-ahead in order to submit for that, and we'll get that included in the final plan set. And then lastly is the permit set drawing. Very hard to see here up on the screen, but basically just showing you where the exterior equipment is going to be located. And this is a close-up of what that equipment is gonna look like with a new 2,000-amp switchgear being installed on the exterior of the building, as well as your disconnect. And exterior photo showing it. John Patterson building and electrical permits are approved. And then the schedule. Again, we are anticipating kicking off this at the first location in the group and hoping to be on site at the beginning of October with completion again in March timeframe next year. The equipment will be installed by November. It's just waiting on the electrical switchgear to wrap up this installation. All right, so for the next site, we have a 252 kilowatt DC system size. Your 2020 utility rate was 9.77 cents. We're locking you in at a fixed PPA rate of 3.5 cents for the full 20-year term, providing $523,077 in savings over the contract period. Contract was executed in October of 2021. Again, BL completed the structural for this facility with 5 PSF of loading. And then we've included the stamped racking drawings from Unirack, as well as the permit set showing the equipment locations. Permits are approved for electrical and building. And then in terms of the schedule, we're looking at mid-October to kick off this installation with equipment being fully installed by November and then full completion of the project in early 2023. Lastly, for the high school. It is a 360-kilowatt DC system size being installed on the newly re-roofed areas of the facility. Your 2020 utility rate was 9.93 cents for this location. We locked you in at a fixed rate of 4.8 cents under the PPA, and that's for the full 20-year term, providing $667,686 in savings. Contract was executed in October 2021. Again, BL completed the structural here. There's also 5 pounds of, pounds per square foot of available loading at this location. The racking set is included in the deck from Unirack. And the next slide is the adjustment that we've made to the design per the request, I believe, of Lou, moving some of the modules here in red to the areas that you see in green for relocation. For the permit set, again, showing a location of the equipment at the school. And the close-up image of the meters and disconnect for this project. Permits are in hand, both building and electrical. And in terms of the schedule, this is one of the later projects that we would look to begin in November with full installation of the materials by December. And then again, completion in early 2023, just based off of electrical gear timelines. Lastly, just to run through environmental benefits with you. This portfolio will offset 909 metric tons of carbon dioxide per year. It's a great thing to use as an educational tool within your schools. We do have some organizations we work with that will choose to have a monitor up. So any students coming into the facility will see that you've gone solar and contract the environmental benefits of doing so. Apologies, I think my internet kicked out, so one minute here.
No, no problem. I was gonna say, I thought Katie might have frozen with her internet, so.
You wanna finish it off, Brian, while I'm logging back in?
Yeah, yeah, let me do that. I mean, some of the last slides are just some closing summary in a way for Verge. Katie touched on some educational benefits that you can get from solar, whether it's via displaying the monitoring portal, it's a web-based link, so you can kind of pull it up technically on any computer and display it. You know, to the extent there's ever interest for Newington, you know, obviously, we always like to offer, say, we can give people tours of a solar array. Of course, it might be a little different when it's up on the rooftop of a building. And, you know, to the extent we could ever offer our services to come speak to classes or things of that nature, we're always happy to offer that as well if that's ever an interest. One of the last slides is just some testimonials, you know, just put some quotes or other impacts from some of the people we've worked with or other municipal partners. So you see a couple at least, West Hartford and East Hartford listed on here. We've also done some work with West Haven and some other municipalities as well. But don't necessarily need to read all of those at the end for you here as we're taking up some minutes. And that kind of hits the end at least of the update on the project. And of course, we'd be happy to answer any questions, should anybody have any.
All right, Ms. Dros.
It says...
I have three, so I'm...
It's off again.
You saw it turn green. Thank you, Ms. Parati. All right, so my first question is, who carries the insurance liability? So if something should happen that goes wrong with the solar panels, who's liable for that? My second question is, how much disruption does this cause during the school day if you're putting them on? My kids are in school. And the third one is, are all of your employees vetted if they're gonna be on school property as far as safe to be around children? I'm just gonna leave it at that without getting into detail. So those are my three questions for you.
Sounds good, sounds good. Certainly on the insurance side, not only by the PPA contract, but ultimately, the contract says we're required to carry certain levels of insurance. We also would do that on our own accord, so we maintain commercial general liability insurance, automobile liability insurance, umbrella excess liability insurance, property insurance on our solar array. So certainly from that standpoint, we make sure to have proper insurance coverage in place for our installation work and system operation. So hopefully that answers that question. In terms of disruption or things during school windows, I mean, generally speaking, once the equipment is loaded up onto the rooftop, then essentially, workers are mostly working on the rooftop. As you can tell, there is some external electrical equipment and some other things that happen at the ground level. So those things happen as well. From our experiences, you know, the disruption is generally minimal. We've done a lot of solar installations, both at Verge and the team members of Verge worked together at a prior solar company. And lots of solar installations on schools and things while school is in session. So unfortunately, I'd love to have, you know, perhaps one of our EPC team members like Steve on the call this morning, maybe to go in a little more detail. And Katie, you can add anything if you do, but I think the short answer is that generally, the disruption is minimal. There's not a lot of noise going on that's gonna, that should impact your classes. And then for your third question, in terms of if employees are vetted, I can at least speak to, you know, that internally and that Verge, you know, we do, we have vetted these employees and done background checks and other things. In terms of if there are, I'm not privy to if there's specific requirements we would need to do for the school board with any individuals that would be working on site. We do utilize electrical subcontractors to do some of the installation work, so it's not all just Verge employees that are onsite performing the work. But in terms of any subcontractors, they are similarly required to maintain insurance and do so. But in terms of if there's any specific Newington Board of Ed specific kind of clearance procedures, I'm not sure if we've done that or not.
We can handle it like we did, Steve, for the folks from the Antirentals Construction Project. So we would just need to kind of validate what these, what this company has on their file. And from there, we would be able to see if we need to do anything deeper. But typically, a background check that you would do would meet our standards, so we would... I did ask that question in one of my emails to someone on the call, and I'm just waiting to hear back about that particular issue, but I hope that answers the question.
All right, Ms. Laverrier.
Thank you, Dr. Fletcher. I wanna make a comment that with the locked-in rates, some of which being a third of the current rate being locked in for 20 years, I think that's for next year for our budget season, which is, seems like it never goes away. It's gonna help reduce our mill rate in an age with out-of-control inflation. And I think that this is a pretty darn good fiscal move all around, and I was impressed by that from that perspective. And I do have a question for you, Dr. Fletcher and Dr. Brummett, whether we can perhaps schedule a facility subcommittee meeting to go over the environmental impact for this roof work for these projects. I'll defer to you for that answer. Thank you very much.
I think it's great, yeah.
All right, we're gonna go online to Mr. Sharma.
Hey, I've got two questions. First one is, how much is your company like gonna invest in like doing the whole setup for the, for our schools? In terms of putting the stuff up on the roofs? So how much are you guys gonna invest? And also, like, how long, I mean, how much are we gonna save in like, in 20 years? In terms of like, how much in energy are we gonna save in the 20-year lease?
Yes, in terms of the energy savings numbers, they're in each of these slides in the deck, which we can certainly circulate this to the Board of Ed group so that you can, you know, share with your team and everything. But each of these four schools estimates around $500-plus thousand dollars of energy savings over the course of the 20 years. And that is based on the offsettable utility rates we had from bills in 2020 when we were originally kind of putting together this portfolio and looking to figure out what pricing we could offer. So the expectation is that these offsettable utility costs will actually rise, starting even either now or next year. And typically, you see those utility costs rise year over year. So each of the schools is at least estimated to save $500,000 to $600,000 over the 20 years, and it could be more if utility rates continue to rise. In terms of the investment our company is gonna make in these projects, I don't have exact numbers in front of me, but I can try to give you a ballpark, at least just for these four school projects, which are gonna add up to, I believe, somewhere, let's call it around 1,100 kilowatts or so. I'm just gonna guess that that might be about $2.5 million of solar equipment that we will be financing and paying for, I guess, ourselves, essentially. As Katie's mentioned, there's no investment from the town. So we finance all of our projects. We, you know, work with financiers to help us do that. And so that's probably a rough estimate of the amount we would invest in just these four projects. As Katie mentioned, we have some others with the town that's on, you know, other town buildings like Town Hall, Senior Center, and some others that would add to that investment and potential town savings, of course, over 20 years.
Yeah, and hey, Brian, this is Adam Taff from Titan. Appreciate everybody including me in on this. Just for some background as to who I am. I'm an energy, a renewable energy procurement consultant. I actually worked with the town. And, you know, the town had brought me in to just review, you know, the feasibility of these projects, double-check some of the savings estimates, et cetera, just to make sure that, you know, what was being presented was likely to play out in reality. And one point I do wanna make, because I have worked with the town related to analyzing their energy costs. When these savings estimates were put together, they reflect a current price of electricity that was locked in with a third-party supplier, which is, I believe, has about another year left on it before that expires. And based on where we're seeing rates today, they're likely going to be, you know, five to six cents... five to six cents per kilowatt hour higher than they are now, um, which would increase your saving, your, your savings because basically your savings are calculated relative to what the alternative is, which is to purchase energy from ever source. Um, so the savings estimates here presented are actually, uh, quite understated. Um, and if there was ever a point in time in the future, if the school district, uh, has a sense of what its next, um, electricity rate is going to be with their, with their supplier, we can always adjust these rates so they'll be more accurate. But again, I just want to reiterate that, um, they're fairly understated.
All right. So can you, um, can you give us like maybe a copy of like what your, I mean, your two, you said you're going to invest about 2.5 mil. Is that like labor or is that only material? What is, what's the breakdown?
Yeah, that would be a rough estimate, uh, of the total cost of installation. So that would include both materials and labor. Um, that's just my rough estimate in my head without being able to look at, you know, individual project specifics. But yeah, that's a total all-in cost.
All right. So can you give us that, and also next question would be like, when you, when you monetize the, you know, the credits, how much, how much do you guys make on that?
What do you mean by that?
Well, it says that you, you are, I mean, with the energy credits, you sell them, you monetize them, right? So that's how you make revenue. So what's the, how much, how much, how much do you guys make on that?
It depends on the project. Uh, the, the ZRec program is split into different sized buckets. So it depends if it's a medium or small project. Um, all of these school projects are medium projects. So I believe the ZRec price is somewhere around eight cents or eight and a half cents per kilowatt hour that we can monetize through those ZRec project or contract.
Right. So we just need some, some sort of like, uh, an estimate or something that how much, you know, how much that is going to be?
Okay, we, I'm sure we can put that together. Um, that does not impact, you know, of course, the, the rate that Newington would be paying for the, the energy that's generated. Um, that, that ma, the main reason why we're able to offer a rate that's like three and a half cents in some of these schools or 4.8 is because we're able to collect those ZRec revenues and, uh, offer a better rate to the town.
All right.
All right. So I got two more board members, Amy, and then we'll go to Anastasia.
Thank you. Um, just a couple of questions. One, will, will, um, these, this array, um, for each school, will it cover 100% of the energy that the school is using? And if, um, not, well, will it?
Um, typically, I, we, we can pull those numbers together for you. I don't know if Katie has them off the top of her head. You know, the, the desire would be to try and offset as close to, uh, all of your usage as possible. Uh, sometimes that's, uh, not feasible either due to the, the roof condition or the size of the building. So as an example, I would suspect that the size of the solar array on the high school is not going to, you know, be offsetting anywhere close to 100% of your annual usage at that particular school. But some of the other, uh, schools, uh, Ruth Chaffey or Elizabeth Green or John Patterson might be a little closer to that, um, higher, you know, 90 to 100% offset. But, uh, we could try to put that together. I know we have something like that probably in the past, but it might be based on, you know, 2020 usage numbers for the school. But we could certainly, I, I think have something or put something together that gives you an idea.
Okay. So, so, um, we just pay the ever-source rate or the negotiated contracted rate, whichever, um, through a third-party supplier, um, for the additional rate?
Yep.
Okay. Um, I was hoping that it was.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was just, I had, um...
Be like the other. You go, I'm not done.
You go. Do it. Do it.
You're right though. The, the kilowatt hours, uh, the excess is just like you didn't have solar on there. So you're either purchasing it through ever-source or you have a third-party supply contract. So that's accurate.
Okay. Thank you. Um, I had to learn my house, my old house, and I produced more than I used. So there's credits and I liked that option, but apparently that's not the case here, which that's okay. Um, and my second com, oh, so seeing that three of the four schools are elementary schools and I'm hoping in some point in the future, the fourth elementary school will have solar on it. Um, I think that your offer to speak to classrooms and do some sort of educational, um, opportunity is a very good one. I think it's, you know, I have a, a third grader, she loves, you know, special events and, and people coming into the school to talk to them and, um, and then she picks up on it and like learns. So especially at the elementary level, if somebody comes in and talks about solar panels on the roof of the school and they're seeing them every day or they, you know, know that's there, then they just translate that to their futures and, um, you know, conscious of clean energy. So I think that we should definitely take, um, you up on that and that would be fantastic to see in all four schools eventually.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Yop.
Thank you, Dr. Fletcher. So, um, I have a couple of questions. So, um, in regards to, uh, Amy talking about Anna Reynolds, are we going to eventually put solar, if this goes through, on Anna Reynolds? I mean, is, can that be worked into the deal or is it just for these schools right now?
Anna Reynolds is not on the contract because their roof is not replaced yet. So that would have to be a separate program. Because yeah, the, the roof won't be completely done, the whole school won't be done for another two years. But, um, I don't know if anyone on the line wants to comment. Could we add a school down the road? We have a school under construction. Uh, would that be easily done?
With those rates?
Yes, it is. But... You go ahead, Katie.
Yeah, we'd absolutely love to take a look at a, any additional future locations for you guys. Um, it is going to be, um, basically a, a very similar process down the road. We would just come out, take a look at the facility and we'll be able to work up some, some figures for you and they should be very similar to, you know, what we're showing you here in this proposal.
Thank you. Uh, my next question is, and from you said there was a 10-year warranty. What was that on? It was like a piece?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so Veragey...
What is it called? But we're in a 20-year contract. So what happens after the 10 years?
Good, good, good question. Um, Veragey owns all the equipment, so we're actually, uh, will hold the warranties for everything. Um, and what I had mentioned was the inverters, you know, typically as a company will either purchase an extended inverter warranty upfront or plan to replace it in year 10 at the end of the expected useful life. So it's all built into the contract and again, no out-of-pocket expense to the town whatsoever.
Thank you. And my last question is, what's the cost to take off the solar, solar panels if we need to replace a portion of the roof? I know sometimes solar companies, and you know, I work in mortgages, they charge a fee if we need to fix certain sections.
Yes, generally, yeah, what, what we tried to do, I mean, typically we're looking for, in all scenarios, an ideal installation that can sit there for the term of the PPA. So, you know, the, the price that we're, we offered is based on the installation costs and everything that goes into it on the expectation that, uh, the solar would be able to stay for those 20 years. Um, you know, that's why we also look to coordinate with roof warranties and structural and everything to make sure that the, the solar array can stay there for that term. Uh, in the event there was some need of the town to do some work to the building or the roof that, you know, wasn't a result of the solar installation or something with the solar, because if it's, if it's a result of our solar installation work, then that's on us. But if it's just like, hey, we want to fix this section or we want to add a RTU to the roof, um, that would require us to, uh, kind of remove a section, uh, typically that is something we would have to work with the town. Uh, usually that is going to be a cost that would be on, on the, the client or in this case, Newington in terms of us having to shut down the system for a period of time and remove it. Um, but in the end, we want to try to work to make sure it's, uh, works for everybody at the same time too. Um, but ideally, we're looking to just have these systems stay in place for the whole term and nothing needs to happen.
So just so I can make sure I'm understanding, you want to put these solar panels on picture perfect roofs, essentially a roof that doesn't need any replacement because you expect them to sit on for 20 years. Um, and there is a cost. Is there any way you can get us an information about how much that will cost to replace, um, you know, to pick up your solar panels, shut down that section and put them back on? Can you get, get us those numbers?
I think we can certainly put together an estimate. The, the difficult part, I guess, of it is that it kind of would depend on, does this happen in a year or two versus, you know, 15 years from now when let's say we don't have clarity into what things would cost then or labor cost. But ultimately, I think we can certainly give you an indicative idea of what that could, could be.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So do we have any more questions for Veragey? Lou?
I just have, uh...
You want to turn your mic on?
Hey, it's Lou Jackemots. I just have a couple of quick items on the sketches you were reviewing. Uh, if you can go back to the high school one on the slide where you were making the adjustment to the area over the cafeteria?
Mm-hmm. Is this where you're referring to, Lou?
I can't see it yet.
Oh, that's, yeah, sorry. I'm having technical difficulties like Katie. Hopefully, is my presentation showing again or do I need to re-present?
Yeah, re-present.
Sounds good. Was this the slide you were referring to, Lou?
Yep. That's perfect. Okay. Uh, in the section of the roof where you're showing the panels with marked out with the red Xs, uh, if you go along the left side of that coming down, which would be southward, there's, uh, looks like three panels that are kind of sticking out on the very last row to the left. If those could be moved off that area, that's really the path of travel for the significant winter maintenance and that doesn't look like it's going to be wide enough without those three panels, you know, straight down the row, uh, going elsewhere. So if you can put those up.
Are you referring to these like right, right here?
No, coming, um, in a north-south orientation, the three individual panels in the last row on the left in that middle section. No, not, okay. Um, there's a line that goes across the middle of the, that section, left to right. You're going to go up and down and just below that line, there's three panels that are in the far left-hand column, you know, be your column A if you were on a spreadsheet in that section.
Yep.
And it's just those three going somewhere else where we're just a little more workroom there. Because when we have our big snowfall and the big roof deflection, we just need some room to navigate when it's, you got piles and piles of snow everywhere. Those are going to be really in the direct path of travel because there will be snow piled up against the, uh, west-side wall there.
Okay. Yeah, we, we will make sure to coordinate with, uh, I know you've been sometimes speaking with Kyle and Kyle Perry and other of our design team via email. We'll make sure to pass that along to him and make sure he confirms, uh, that we're doing it the right way.
Okay. Uh, second one now, if you just go to John Patterson with, again, the, uh, graphic where you're moving the panels elsewhere. There's a tree in that, uh, courtyard. Is the expectation that that tree is going to be cut down as part of this? Because that was really a shade issue, I believe, why the spacing on the, uh, roof was left open.
Yeah, we are, we, when we moved, uh, I guess moved the panels away from that roof, which will now have them impacted by the tree, our solar, our updated solar modeling will account for the shade from the tree. We were not anticipating to, uh, have to remove that tree.
Okay. All right. And then over at Elizabeth Green, the last item is in the, uh, picture that you had with the overlay of your, uh, cage location, uh, it showed several items highlighted in black adjacent, not that one, it was actually the photograph of the area. Uh, yes, okay. Yeah, you were just on the right one, the photograph. Okay. Right. Nope, not the two-line drawing, the picture right next, on the next slide. That slide, yes.
Am I going the wrong direction? This one?
No, be right, slide 22 is perfect. Okay. Uh, up on the roof, you're showing four boxes, uh, that is a little bit to the right of where you're going to be mounting all the equipment in the courtyard. What are those for? Is it that equipment going up on the roof?
I'm not sure what those are reflecting. Um, you know, typically, obviously the, the solar equipment that we're talking about is mounted there, there on the ground on the wall. And usually what's up on the roof is of course inverters and racking and other things. So, um, let me double-check with Kyle on that unfortunately, but certainly let you know.
All right. Okay, thank you. I'm all set.
You're welcome.
Okay, go ahead.
Just a quick comment and we don't obviously have to answer it now, but when we do talk about the budget in the future, I'm assuming the Board of Ed is responsible for paying for, um, our electricity used in the school. So just want to, um, understand how that's going to work if we're expected to give any of our savings to the town or if we get to, um, benefit from the savings, just to comment that, um, we should be aware of that as we make our budget for next year.
Thank you.
Okay. I think that since we're paying, any benefit would go toward us, toward our budget.
It will affect our reduction of our, our rates and bills.
Yeah. Yeah. All right. Well, I want to say thank you very much for the presentation and answering all of our questions. So we're all set.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
All right. You all have a good night.
You too.
All right, you too. Hope it, hope it goes quick for you.
I think we're on the whole stretch.
They're going to be there till 1:00 AM, just so you know.
Well, good luck, everybody.
Good night.
Okay.
So we're now going to move on to number two, the update from the Transportation Services.
Yeah, and I just want to make sure everyone knows, this is a very limited presentation. It's not about planning for budget or anything. It's simply about what would be the impact if we were to add additional riders this year, which is an issue that was brought forth by our parent speaker earlier this evening. Um, so his, it's very limited and it is brief. And he's handing things out, but it's also going to be on the screen. Check out the queue. It'll be on the ID.
Yes, I drew that myself.
See that? We're making an impact. We'll kick it off to Mr. Dean for a very brief overview of the impact.
Good evening. And before I start, I want to let the board know, we greatly appreciate, um, the support that the school district is giving to, uh, the driver, uh, one of our employees who did lose his home. Um, the high school, all of the schools have graciously taken up offerings and done some different things and the family is very grateful. Uh, he came back to work, um, Monday. Uh, we were eight drivers short, so he, I sent him a quick text and said, would you possibly be able to come in to drive to help us out? Uh, and he graciously said, thank you for calling because I need something to do, uh, instead of just pondering, uh, what's going. But the family is doing well and he does appreciate it. We've received a lot of donations to our office, uh, on their behalf and thank you very much for your support. So briefly, I just want to, um, as Dr. Brummett has shared, to understand the policy has been in place for many, many years. It was, uh, one policy that changed approximately 12 years ago, uh, when the superintendent had reduced the walking district, um, by a quarter. So the state standards, um, which are reflected are two miles for high school students, a mile and a half for middle and elementary, a mile. The Newington Board of Education's policy has been in place, as I said, for many years. Uh, all kindergartners, students receive transportation regardless of their distance. And that is within the walking district. Uh, this also now involves preschoolers are part of that as well. So that is a policy set by the board, is a policy that we follow. And we probably get 80 requests, um, a year, uh, for parents that... 80 requests a year for parents that go, especially from elementary to middle, middle to high school, now their children have to walk greater distances. And I can tell you, we've probably fielded at least 80 calls this year requesting exceptions to that rule. Why do their children have to walk? Why do their children have to now? They got a bus last year. While they're in middle school, they have to walk farther. They have to walk farther to bus stops. And on many occasions, we get those requests. If they are not satisfied with that answer, which is a board policy, and we simply share with the parents that we don't make the rule, we have to enforce the rule, and unfortunately, you live within that walking district. So we get those, and there is only a few exceptions, and those are 504s, IEPs, that would give Dr. Brummett through an appeal process that a parent is able to process. And she reviews it, we review it, we give her the information, and it has only been a few exceptions that involve special situations, such as the 504s, IEPs, that would circumvent that rule. We often get parents that say, "Well, your mileage is wrong." Well, Erin and I have gone on many occasions and walked from the driveway to the school with a walking wheel to measure, and people are like, "What do you do?" So I brought a little show and tell, and this is my friend, and we go walking from the corner of the driveway by state statue and regulations that sort of put together the walking distances and regulations under the state guidelines. So we walk and we measure to get it exact from the driveway so that we can show a parent that they live within the walking district, because Google and map systems are not accurate on many occasions. Okay? So we often get requests, again, for the request for walkers, or in these cases, to request to have your children ride with a kindergartner. You can see that on the page that I've shared with you, that at Anna Reynolds, there are presently eight families. At E. Green, there are presently 11 families. Ruth Chafee, there is five. John Patterson, there are six. That could be afforded to ride with a sibling, but there is consequences to that. If you afford a neighbor that has a kindergartner and a sibling, you are then going to invoke neighbors saying, "Well, why can't my children ride if their child could ride?" We would open up the floodgates to that request. So there is a cost to that. We could absorb these numbers with present buses, but where do you stop? And as a policy change, now does that involve allowing all kindergartners now to ride? Does that open up to letting all the kindergartners, all of the walkers in every school district to start riding? And that is a choice that the board has to make. If that is what we do, we are now going to impact by adding buses. We could not absorb all of the walkers in the elementary level with the present buses. There is timing that is involved. There is the increase that you'll have of fuel that would be a cost factor that would add to that. So the impact on that would be approximately $50,000 per bus that would have to be added per year to operate.
Pardon me, is it that if all elementary students rode...
Yes.
Thank you. Sorry for drifting.
Yes. That would be the impact that would be required, and that takes the bus, the fuel, maintenance, if we were to add a route bus into the complete operation. To facilitate moving this from just the kindergartners with siblings, and if it continued to go to the request to have all children that are walkers in the elementary level to ride the buses. Presently, we have 27 route buses with nine spares. Four of those spares are utilized for sports in the afternoon. So therefore, to move from the request to just these students, if it continued to go farther, we would then have to add the buses, which is adding to the budget, to the choices that would have to be made. And that's really...the rest of the information is before you to review.
What's up, Wagner? You have your hand raised first?
I didn't.
Oh, I don't know.
Sorry. I'll be brief, sorry. I might have not heard, but what would the cost associated be if we just allowed kindergarten students with a sibling only?
That would just be an impact of extra fuel, timing on the bus routes.
So that would be extra time and fuel.
We would be able to utilize...we could utilize buses that are present, yes.
Okay. And then what capacity are our buses currently at for elementary?
We're running approximately...we just did student counts last week in preparation for...it's normally what we do in the first...after the first few weeks of school. We're running approximately 75% capacity.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Rose?
It sounds like I need to have a conversation with my friend, Mr. Freese, to set up a policy meeting pretty soon on this. You know, I think it's...you know, I think we need to relook at the policy, and I don't think adding every elementary school student, in my opinion, I think that's...but I do think we could probably look at the policy, because I do understand that it's a clear thing to say, and we don't have the policy, so unfortunately, you can't say yes, but I'm doing my best. If you have a kindergartner, you actually have a kindergartner, your other children will be bused too. And I think if that policy is stated clearly, and it's not going to cost the board any more money, because I do know, like, it's harsh when you see an empty bus driving, like, a bus that's not full dropping off kids, and you're like, "What is going on?" So I do think we need to maybe revisit that as a policy.
All right, Ms. Yop, you can go next, and then Richard, you can go after.
Okay, I have a question. You said it wouldn't cost anything, but do we have enough drivers? So that would be a cost. That's what I'm confused about. We have...we have the extra buses, but do we have enough drivers for those buses?
We would, to...to...just to clarify, to add the students that are kindergartners with a sibling, they would be able to be absorbed within the present buses that we are operating. The only addition would be fuel and timing to those routes, because every time you pick up a student, and every time you make a stop, that adds a minute to two minutes to a route. Every child stepping on board, which a lot of people don't take, we get that all the time. "Well, it's just another extra couple of minutes to come around my neighborhood." Well, yep, and you and the other five people in your neighborhood want stops closer or at their houses, so every time would be added time. So that would be the impact. Again, that impact wouldn't affect us presently with drivers. If we had to add buses, if this policy were to go beyond just this request, now all of a sudden, all of the neighbors that live next door to these families say, "Well, why can't my child ride?" That's the concern, and we get that often, especially when the walking district, if it stops at Lou's house and Richard's house has to ride, well, we're just three houses. There has to be a...we get those hundreds of those every year. And I feel bad, but there's a walking district.
So my other question is, are these children, and you might have answered, are they in the same school as their siblings?
Yes.
So they have to drive one?
Yes.
But they...so they have to walk one? Okay, so I'm just making sure I understand. So you're saying that one of the children get walked or driven?
Well, in my circumstance, I walk my daughter to the bus stop, she gets on the bus, I walk home, and then I get my son, I walk him back, and then we all walk home together, but she can't. She'd be left unattended.
So do they all...and I only have one child. Do they all start school at the same time? So could we drive all of them, or bus all of them? Okay, I just wanted to make sure. I'm the same...I just wanted to make sure. And you said, okay, the total cost, I just want to make sure I'm at this total cost, would only be the 50? Or does that change if fuel goes up? Does that...I mean, is that the total cost?
Right. So I want to try to be...make sure I'm very, very clear. To absorb the students that this request and this parent has come requesting, we could do it at each school with present buses, okay? My concern as the Director of Transportation is if this doesn't stop here at this request, and now you allow one family to have the right, the neighbor and the other three neighbors on the street that have first graders and second graders are going to say, "Why do they get to ride and I don't?" So to the board's understanding is that that will impact, because if the board comes back and say, "Well, now we have a line of people saying, 'We should ride. I've given you the numbers of your elementary schools. You would need to add buses to accommodate all of the walkers to the schools at a cost of $50,000 per bus."
How many buses?
You would need at least the number one for John Patterson, one, two for Ruth Chafee, one for E. Green, and one for Anna Reynolds.
So about another $250,000 per year?
Yes, ma'am.
Again, that's to add all current walkers.
Yes.
Just to restate, if we add the kindergartner siblings, no significant cost, maybe a little longer getting the kids on the bus or whatever, but the risk is that parents will cry foul, and I can tell you, I get those complaints all the time.
We do, too.
We get someone who's riding a bus for confidential reasons on a street where it's normally walkers, and the parents complain that this is not fair. Why can't Mike and I can't...I basically have to tell them it's a confidential situation, but you're in a walking district. So anyway, just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Thank you, Dr. Fletcher. I do not think it is at all a practical solution to eliminate the walking distance for all elementary students. It would...it would just present a significant cost that we don't...we don't need to take on. It's Caitlin, right? Can I...can I talk about what we discussed?
Let's keep our comments to the board.
Yeah.
Okay, public participation will come after.
Thank you, Dr. Fletcher. So I spoke with somebody who spoke earlier this...tonight over the summer, and I think that the situation that she's going through is it's not...it's not really safe. As was stated earlier, she's...you know, she has to have her daughter walk home with them because she'd be unattended, and that does present a safety issue. I would like to request that the Policy Committee do take on a one-year exemption of the 0.75-mile walking distance when they do have a sibling in kindergarten. Although it would be within the walking distance, that would...as the presentation...as we learned in the presentation, that would add one to two minutes for the route. Now, how many...how many students is this going to be applicable to? That may need to be calculated out, but...
It's on the presentation. The highlighted item is the number of kids in kindergarten who have siblings.
So that would be eight to 16 total minutes. I mean, that is something that is...can be absorbed.
Sometimes not.
We're not talking...we're not talking per...per bus. We're talking total, right? So I mean, that could be one to two minutes per...theoretically, per bus. That...I think that it's an easy fix.
Yeah, I think where we're at right now, everything is hypothetical, and I think that what we need to do at this point is we need to refer this to the Policy Committee, let them do the research, let them come back to the board with their suggestions.
Well, okay. And well, thank you, Dr. Fletcher. It does seem like it's a...it's a no-brainer and an easy fix, but thank you.
Mr. Berndt, you're next.
Thank you. Great tie. Did you notice any difference in the opt-out percentage this year with the parent square in the survey that went out, or was it about the same of parents opting out of bus usage?
We increased our bus usage this year.
You did?
Oh, yes. Yes.
You think that was because of COVID, like, parents were driving their kids during COVID and...
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Okay. So are we back to, like, 2019 levels?
Yes. We're still seeing some modification as far as parents driving their students, but it was much less.
Yeah.
We handled over 800 change requests since the...probably the first week of August in my office, and we are still. With the survey that went out, and then once that survey ended, it became the secretaries forwarding that information. So we've done over 800 changes, and the majority of parents have put their children back on the buses.
And do we know...I know you mentioned earlier that we're about 75%. Is that the expected percent? Or do we...do we still have a lot of parents who opt in and then still drive their kids to school, and they kind of like save the seat? You know what I mean? Are we...is 75% of the capacity of the bus match with the opt-out percentage roughly?
Yes. Yeah, the majority...occasionally, parents will decide, you know, "I'm going to drive my children today," or what have you. We try to have that carried through at the school level. Our drivers right now, after being a couple of weeks of school, they're bringing us in stops where there are no students. If a student isn't riding, we then call that family before we will remove the stop. And we've already...I've handled several of those calls myself. Parents are either with a...with a family member or somebody's driving because of a work situation, "But please don't take my stop away. My children will be coming back on the bus."
Okay. And then last thing, if I can. I know you...you mentioned you bring your friend, you do your walking, and then you walk right to the school. Our parent here mentioned earlier about kind of safety concerns along the route, and I would love it if, especially if there's going to be a policy discussion, if along that time that you're doing the walking, I just think that we need to start identifying some of these issues and address it with the town, because I don't think it's just the Anna Reynolds area. I think it's...you know, I see it in the John Patterson area where we need sidewalks and we don't have them, and, you know, students fit into this 0.75, and I think it's...it totally makes sense why we do it, and I agree on the kindergarten, we should work that out. But I just think we might want to work with the town a little bit to provide some information on, "We're doing this. We're..."you know, let's be real, it does save us money to not drive every student, which I think the town would appreciate, but, you know, if we can make things a little bit safer, I think parents might feel a little bit more comfortable about that mileage. And for somebody who walks it, you know, you're walking a door to school, I think you would have a unique perspective, and you probably already have information on, like, where some of these kind of hotspots are. I think it would be great to collect that and share it through Dr. Brummett and the town to kind of say, you know, "Over time, maybe we could look at these areas to add sidewalks, add crosswalks, add streetlights at some of these school crossings that don't have them, that I do think need them, at least during school season." So just something that I would love for you to kind of look into, you know, when you have time.
Ms. Yop, you're next.
Just totally speaking hypothetically, but I...I do hear how, like, the floodgates could easily open, but I also think hypothetically, if the policy were to be written and to be very clear about, if your elementary school-aged child has a kindergarten sibling, you're eligible. But I think it would have to be very clear-cut, and I think when...I don't really know how this works, but when we do go to look at this policy, wondering if Mr. Barnes could be invited to that meeting, because I think we need some of that valuable background information and data that you have to best write, edit, change, or not the current policy.
I was kind of...well, I was stating, back in the day, I know that...and I'm assuming that someone...your predecessor just didn't have...like, I'd like to see the policy, because back in the day, if there was a... back in the day, if there was a kindergartner, I know for a fact that the elementary school siblings went on the bus with them. So I want to, no, so I'm saying that they probably, so you, you probably have, like, so that's probably where it's kind of like resonating from, is like, people didn't follow the policy, so we need to have a really clear policy. So when we do the policy, like, what is the policy, make sure we're like, so we, we don't have that happen, that we don't play favorites. So I know it wasn't you, I'm just saying.
I've, going, since I came, and my assistant, who has been here for 13 years, said that the policy has been in place and enforced for the last 13 years now. It does not say that a driver may have let a child on the bus, and unfortunately, I have to handle that when I find out.
Well, it's water under the bridge right now, Dana.
My kids are well grown.
Ms. Schaub?
So I understand we need to have a policy meeting, but I know we have a lot of things coming up, and I did speak to Dr. Romette, Dr. Fletcher, we need to have a finance meeting as well, and that's something that we've been working on, because it's not just a policy, it does, you know, affect facilities as well as finance. So we're working on that, and we want to ensure that, you know, this is something that we can afford. I know everyone knows that some of our grants, you know, where we have employees under are expiring, and I want to make sure we're not going to lose anyone. We need all of our teachers, we need all of our staff. So I want to make, I don't know how that would work, where if policy has something, we can make sure that, you know, like, our SIR funds, you know, will be up. We have a lot of people under there, I don't want to lose any staff. So I want to make sure that, while we do want to make sure everyone's safe, safety's priority, I did love Michael Branda's idea, we need to work with the town, my son went to Patterson, and that was not an easy drop-off. Thank you for doing the parking lot, but it is now, but it was not, and, I mean, I, Richard is, you know, we've been together trying to pick up my son, it was craziness. So I do thank you both for that, that was a good project, but I think the Finance Committee needs to be involved, and some of the same people on all committees, so I think that'd be really good, because I want to make sure that when doing this, we're not going to be sacrificing people. I need to make sure that we're keeping the people that work here at our school system, and I want to make sure that we can afford all of that. So that's all I wanted to say.
What's up, Wagner?
Totally agree, but I just want to make sure there's no cost, though, to, if, if, hypothetical world, it was kindergarten only with elementary siblings, there's no cost with just that. There's no money costs.
The only cost would be the extra fuel for driving.
Would that be substantial enough to like rock the books?
None, no, but just one.
Yeah, no, of course, of course, thank you, I, yeah.
To your point, though, we do have to keep in mind that every time you add a person getting on a bus, it does take longer.
It does.
To load the bus, because children don't jump.
They.
They take their time.
Yep, we don't open the door and say, jump out, we got to keep going. Every, every minute in, in transportation on a bus is critical. And if you add five minutes, now you're getting super critical, because the last thing this board or administrators want, and I want to be hearing, why is your buses arriving late? Why are they not on time? Well, we've had to add six, seven stops to a route that was getting to the school, and now the buses are not getting there on time. I've been in this business for 30 years, I've heard that call way too many times, because we make decisions for reasons that are popular or make somewhat decisions to, that are made that have an effect. Everything has a cause and effect, and if you add time, there's fuel, there's timing that it's involved, the afternoon routes are critical, because we leave a school, we have to get to that next school, or we're running late. We're already dealing with that presently, with all of the expansions and trying to work that out.
And Ms. Perotti?
Thank you. Is there any policy or, or understanding of there's like a approximate length or distance that a child can walk to a bus stop? Because I know, like, my daughter has to walk down the street and a couple blocks over, which is fine, like, it's okay, but if some are getting picked up in front of the house versus that, so just maybe that's something that can be considered when looking at the policy, and hopefully you can be there to address a question like that. And another question I had is, of these like eight families or two or more siblings or 11, are all of those families utilizing the bus now for their kindergarteners? And if not, is there a risk that they will, like, Ms. O'Neil has, you know, her daughter takes it in the morning, but in the afternoon, but is, maybe there's families that just drive their children to school, and if we change this policy this year, did you already account for, you know, none of those eight families are using the bus now, and then they will if we make a decision to change?
No, I haven't made that decision, that thought. It's based on the information, whether most of the kindergarten students, probably at least half within the walking districts, get buses, and that's an option. They're all offered it, and some pull out from choosing to do so. But the exact number, to your question, I wouldn't have that off the top of my head.
Yeah, just, just something to keep in mind, I know it, it obviously will vary year to year, you can see the numbers from just last year to this year, increased in families or number of siblings, and of course, it could go down when, you know, the kindergartners or the family leaves the school. So just, maybe that would be an extra just piece of data that we could get in making a decision, especially for this year.
Correct.
One more? Okay, go ahead.
In regards to getting data, I know I had a preschooler who took a bus, and it takes a while to get them into that, like, harness thing, so it's not just getting them on the bus really quick. You have to make sure there, there's not always a parent, it's usually you. So you have to go on the bus, and the parent puts their kid in that kind of seatbelt thing, and that does add to the time. There, I mean, unless we put someone on the bus, the, the parent is usually responsible for that. So if they're under a certain age, it's called a five, six harness?
It's a five-point harness, that is on the mini buses only. We don't have them on big buses.
So are these buses, well, there's kindergartners on there, are, there could be these on these buses, which does add an extra five plus minutes, because I've used it. So if you have to get on the bus, put your child in this five-point harness, then get the sibling on, I mean, that's more than five minutes sometimes. So what time are these kids going to get picked up when they start school at 8:30, 45?
Can I just clarify very quickly? You're referring to specialized pickups?
No, not just specialized, preschool.
Am I wrong? Is it a special bus that does that?
If they're on special transportation or smaller buses. That does take place. If it's on a big bus, we have preschoolers, kindergartners that ride the big buses, they just get on the buses and sit in the regular seats. There is no law that governs them sitting in seat belts or seat harnesses on big buses. That is correct for mini buses that you're referring to, and it does.
Okay, thank you.
And that does not normally do kindergarten pickup or regular elementary pickups, so it's a separate issue.
Well, I was just confused, hold on.
Yep, so we're going to refer this to the Policy Committee, so they're going to take it up. Thank you very much for the information that you have brought, we can't make a decision tonight anyway, so we are going to quickly move on, we have a few reports to go through.
Yes, and I would suggest, Dr. Fletcher, in the interest of time, that board members could review those reports on their own, and if they have any questions, they can send them my way, and as always, there's a future agenda items, look through that, work with Dr. Fletcher if you want to add agenda items. Those are just boilerplate repeating agenda items that are year to year. And on the last item, number six, the PTA assignments, everyone is assigned to visit a PTA during the year, so just, you know, be mindful of that schedule, and if you can't make it, just let the school know. So I think that kind of covers that without getting into a lot of detail.
One of the other things that we have done in the past, if you cannot make your PTA, your PTO assignment, you can always call another board member and ask them if they're available to take your place, so that somebody is there, okay? All right, at this time, I'm going to move on to public participation, if there's anyone in the room from the public that wants to participate.
Maybe on the line.
Or online. The window of opportunity is rapidly closing. I can open it up for remarks by board members, but I think that, okay, go ahead.
Well, one of them was regarding the PTO, PTA, and PAC stuff. One of the things I was thinking of, and I feel like I harp on this a lot, is, is honoring those groups at our meetings. We honor a lot of people, and I feel like we have a lot of great volunteers, so instead of maybe inviting the whole group here, something that I just wanted to brainstorm out was maybe encouraging the principals of the schools, or maybe the presidents of each group, to nominate a volunteer of the year that we could honor for each school. I think it would be really nice to just have that moment, because some of these parents do so much for our schools, for our teachers, for our students, it would be great to have. The other thing was, I'm just going to say it, and I'm sorry, I've been on this board now for, we're approaching six years, and I've never witnessed such disrespect for the entire body as we've seen tonight, and I just hope that, and I know that you will, but I hope that you address it with Mr. Le Verrierre, because I've never seen somebody just get up and leave during a meeting like that. And, you know, I had to step out to go say goodnight to my two daughters, because I was here all night, and I know we all stepped away from our families and had to do that, and I think it's just very inappropriate to just get up and leave. Thank you.
Thank you. Duly noted. Somebody? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Good night, everybody.
Hey, Branda, I don't know, you and I, it's like calling off for a beer one night or something, it's a little weird. I, I was emailing my husband.
I have no service.
Because with.